Cottonwood, Arizona to be held February 12th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. First Order Businesses Roll Call.
Councilmember Alt House?
Here.
Councilmember Hulse?
Here.
Councilmember Howdige?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Here.
Mayor Olinsky?
Here, thank you. Okay, we have four items on the agenda tonight. First is the presentation of the Cottonwood Public Library's strategic plan. Evening.
Mr. Mayor, council, Ryan Bigelow, the Director of the Cottonwood Public Library. First and foremost, I want to thank the Cottonwood Library Advisory Board members for being here tonight. They've been a part of this process from day one and they've trusted me to guide them through this. So, thank you all for doing this and thank you for being here. Tonight, I'm here to present the Cottonwood Public Library Strategic Plan, or what we like to call it also, a community needs assessment. Found that whenever I talk to anybody about a strategic plan, they rolled their eyes and ran the other direction. If I called it a community needs assessment, we got to talking. So, we'll start off with just some really basic demographic information. These are demographics that you've seen time and time again, especially at the retreat. But I want you to notice that we're using the 86326 area code versus the city of Cottonwood for our statistics. We think it's a better reflection of our service population. And also a reminder that the library is partially funded by Yavapai County. Last year, we received about $160,000 from the county to help us run operations. You can see the median income for our 86326 is below average. Poverty level is below average. And nearly a quarter of our population is Hispanic. I think that's important for the public library to remember. This is who we are and this is the school that's right across the street from the Cottonwood Public Library. These are the third grade AZ Merit scores in English and Language Arts for the Cottonwood Elementary School, which is now the Cottonwood Community School. You can see that pretty routinely, they are well below the state average for English and Language Arts. We also think that's an opportunity for the library. Physical circulation, so this is where we're at now. This is how we're performing. These are statistics for the library and this is primarily books and DVDs. So, this is something you actually have to check out from the library. You can see we're trending not in the right direction there. The height was 230,000 items in 2015. And you can see in 2018, we were at 208,000 items.
Can we interrupt you as you work through, or would you rather?
No, feel free.
I'm just curious what you attribute that drop to.
I will get to that a little bit, but it's kind of just how the way that the public libraries are being used.
Okay.
So, we can kind of see that, but good question. So, active library cards. You can see that we're also trending down as well, active library cards. Every year, there's a purge, so people will move. If you haven't used your library card in the last two years, you're removed from the system. So, these are just people who have used their library cards in the last two years. And you can see we're at 13,941. But here's what we kind of want to get to here, is that you can see the gate count statistics here. We have three main entrances. Our gate count is continuing to slightly increase, so people are still coming to the library. Our computer usage, so every time somebody uses a public access computer at the library, this includes internet. They are having to log in, so we have accurate login statistics. The computer usage, our computers continues to rise. And here's where we're at with our e-checkout. So, this would be anything you do on your computer, or your tablet, or your smartphone. You can use the public library that way as well. E-audiobooks are in the red. The blue is the ebooks and the yellow is the total. So, you can see that continues to increase. In 2014, we had 9,396 checkouts. In 2018, we had 16,958 checkouts. Point of this is that, you know, people are still using the public library. They're just using it differently. So, the data collection portion of the strategic plan. So, essentially, we conducted four separate interviews, four separate surveys. The first is the patron survey. So, these were more library-specific questions to the current activities at the library. We had 250 responses there, so that was pretty nice. We did, I conducted one-on-one interviews with 17 local organizations. To me, this was the highlight of the process. Able to share with our local leaders and local organizations what the library has to offer and how they can affect either their business or their organization. And again, it's all free. Then we did a community survey, so focused on folks who were not necessarily using the library. To me, this was the most challenging. And this is probably where I would, if I were to do this again, would want to increase those statistics and get more feedback from folks who aren't necessarily using the library. We got 96 Mingus Union High School students to participate. So, that was a surprise, but that was nice to hear from the teens. They're a group we want to focus on at the library, want to have after-school activities for them. So, it was nice to hear back from them. And then, of course, interviewed staff, wanted to get their input on how this all works and what they want and what they want to see done in the future. So, what did we find out? This right here is not library-specific. This is more what the folks want from their community and what they need in their community. Folks, when you're asking, "What do you want this community to look like?", they want entertainment, they want activities for kids, they want music and cultural events, shopping and restaurants, some of these things, obviously, the library's not going to be able to provide. But some of these things, we can. Awareness. Folks talked about wanting to be more aware of not only what happens at the library, but what's happening in our community. The word silos came up quite a bit. And my feeling is that people aren't intentionally put in these silos. They're just so focused on what it is that they're doing and their goals. They don't know what else, they don't have time to look up and see what else is going on. The education and job training. I heard from business owners that soft skills are an issue. Getting people to come in and be able to have a conversation, shake somebody's hand, look them in the eye, that is definitely something I think the library can help out with. Community concerns. Lack of activities for kids, affordable housing, these things you know. Transportation, a lack of culture. Community engagement, some of the things we talked about are what you saw at the retreat. One of the things that I thought was very interesting is a community mentality was a concern. Heard from several people that Cottonwood tends to have a poverty mentality, meaning that it's okay to not be great because we're in Cottonwood. They tend to settle. And then, this is how we do it mentality, which I take as, well, this is how we've always done it. This is just how we do it. And some of our organizations, some of our businesses suffer from those mentalities. So, these are the key findings from the library. These are library-specific. Library needs, more computer access, basic computer classes. We have a jobs computer that often goes untouched, I think, because a lot of the folks who need to apply for jobs don't even know how to use the computer well enough to do that, to go that far. So, that is a huge concern. A collection that reflects the population, just more diversity in the collection. And I think that's something we can do. General community awareness and how to overdrive. We have a lot of folks who like to use their tablets and their smartphones. They just don't know how to get that far. So, we can help out with that, too. And overdrive is the system that we use to do audiobooks and ebooks. The patron concerns. When we polled them, what was frustrating, our hours of operation came up as number one. That's probably something, if you've been on council, you've heard before. 10 to 2 on Mondays and 10 to 2 on Saturdays specifically are limiting the public. And that's what their concern is. Parking, you've probably heard that one before, too. I know folks on the library board have heard parking over and over again. And we're not here to ask for that three-story structure at this point. We're not going to go there yet. We'll wait for that. An improved collection, 8%, and then the library is too loud, only 4%, so that wasn't too bad.
Can you elaborate on improved collection? I'm not sure what that means.
Not enough. So, basically, everybody who wants, who uses a library regularly would like to see more books, more materials, more items, more selection. And I also heard from folks, too, that they would like to see us stay away from the bestsellers some and maybe get into more literature, finer tastes that might not circulate as much. They might, you know, if I order the newest James Patterson, it's going out 20 times in the next two weeks. If we order something that's less popular, we have to kind of weigh that. That's a constant battle.
I was just curious because of that big dip in, you know, things are being checked out. I wonder if, I don't know, I was just curious if there's a connection there or not.
That the collection isn't?
Relevant enough, maybe.
Right, relevant enough, yeah. That could be. So, along with the library advisory board, we just, we collected all this data. We looked at it over and over and over again. And then, we just asked ourselves one simple question, what's important to us? What do we want to be and how do we want to do it? And then, we came up with, similar to what happened in the retreat, we came up with a list of strategic priorities for the library. Creating and inviting space for everyone. I think the everyone was important here. We want to be very inclusive. It's important for a public library to be inclusive. Maximize our hours of operation. That's to make sure we're looking at every angle, to make sure that we're being the most effective for the community as we can be. Provide cultural diversity. Think we can be a place for that, not only in our book collection, but in our programs and our events. Encourage children to experience the world. It's harder to define, but I think a lot of kids who grow up here only see just things that happen in Cottonwood. But this is a big place, this is a big state, this is a big world. We can help them experience the world without leaving the library. Improve adult digital literacy. It's very clear to staff anyways that that's a major need. Strengthen community connectedness. We want to be the hub. We want to be the place where meetings happen, where people go to have conversations, go to have community conversations. And engage member, community members not now utilizing the library. So, we want to focus on somewhat of a marketing plan and be able to reach, let folks know what it is that we do and how we do it and why we do it, to try to gain new, new active library cards. So, where do we go from here? We're kind of going to mirror what the strategic plan looks like. And we're going to try to work with staff and continue to work with the library board to come up with some objectives, to come up with some action items, and put this plan into place and move forward with this as kind of our blueprint for what's important to us and how we want to move forward. You have any questions?
You have any questions for staff? Lofty set of goals. This is great. Thank you. Chairwoman Mitchell, would you have anything to add to this? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just, no. It's just, this is a monumental task and I know your board's always been so active and very strong and I just appreciate the hard work that went into this, so. I didn't know if you wanted to add anything else, you're under no pressure. You'll have to come up to the podium, I'm afraid.
Anyway, thank you, thank you. I would say that the board is soundly behind this. We think it's great, all the things that we've talked about at greater length than this. But I think it would be wonderful for the community, not just the library, but for everyone in the community. There's so much that can be done if we are able to do these things.
Sure.
So, that's about all I have to say now.
Well, great, well, thanks for being here and to the rest of the board as well, yeah. I know this has been, your community needs has been in the making for quite some time, so it's nice to see the culmination of all your work. And please let us know how we can help, except for maybe a parking garage, but. Next year, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add, I want to also say thank you to the board and everybody putting this together. One of the things that I've been hearing over and over from my conferences and my peers is that the city's responsibility lies in that connectedness, creating opportunities for community members to connect with each other for the greater good. And the libraries, the fact that that came up in their strategic initiative and their findings that they play a role in creating opportunities for conversations, for community development, and helping us brand, as you know, that came up in the retreat a lot, this image, this self-identity. And I just, unprovoked, they came up with that on their own and I just think that we're starting to see a theme of where we can put some of our resources to help move us to the next level.
Fantastic. Okay, thanks, thanks to you all. Okay, then we will move on now to second item under the work session tonight, which is discussion and possible direction to staff regarding additional due diligence on the acquisition, finishing, and outfitting of the Rough Cut Building as a new city hall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, since I've joined the organization and probably before I joined the organization, this topic has come up a couple different times. And so, I wanted to bring this back at least one more time because I believe there are some unanswered questions. And based on the previous discussions, the discussions have got wrapped around funding and all sorts of different issues. And I feel like if we're going to move forward with a new city hall, whether it be this building or not, you guys need information. I cannot ask the council to consider a consolidation effort or a movement effort without a price tag because that really is one of the biggest issues. And everything that I've been told so far is a guess. It is an empty shell. It's a beautiful building, but it's going to take some work. And I've heard all sorts of numbers out there and they're probably all close, maybe. And one of the things I was not going to do was ask for, to move forward and then have to come back in a year. I don't have enough. I need another million. And I just don't feel comfortable. Whatever price, if we do move in this direction, I want it to be, that's it. And as I've told staff, if you authorize us to move forward and let's say we decide later on to actually make this happen, and let's say you authorize 6 million, we stop at 6 million. So, if that means we put up plastic partitions and, you know, we tie cans with strings for our telephone system, whatever that final price tag is, that's what we do. So, to make that happen, I need more information. And so, what I'm asking for is really, we can spend up to $50,000 on what I'm considering a 10% build-out of that building so that I can get a good cost estimate on this issue. You guys have heard more than once, reasons for it. I think us moving out of Old Town, creating economic development in the area is very important. I think that we have property that could be better utilized, that would be better suited for a downtown area. But without bringing up all the reasons, really, at this point, I'm asking for your thoughts on moving forward in the process. If this is not even on the table, if nobody on council wants to move forward with the Rough Cut Building, then I'll learn that tonight and we'll move on to Plan B. But really, tonight's discussion is, will you allow me to move forward on getting a good price estimate on what it would take to do this? And then, I would bring that back to you. And here's what it would be, here's the starting asking price of the land, here's what it's going to cost to improve it and to move in, here's the total package. Are you interested still in doing this? And again, that would be a real vote of yes or no, moving forward or not moving forward. You can say no, any part of the process, council can say no. And we can go to Plan B or C or D, whatever we move. But I just kind of feel like we need to move forward. And this is really how I feel the next step is in moving forward. I'm looking forward to hearing feedback.
Okay. Questions, comments?
I'll start and just kind of throw out my whole thing behind this. I put a lot of time and effort into this. And I'm not naturally drawn to doing this, so just know that. I mean, this is not something that is typically something I would jump on. But I've looked at it, I've met the NIH real estate guy over there, I've walked the property. I've seen it. I feel very strongly that in 20 years from now, if we don't do this, we're going to regret it. With the amount of money it looks like it's going to take to put this together and make this a city hall, I don't think we could even build a smaller facility. I don't think we could build a facility today on any of our property that would meet our current needs for this kind of money. So, we have a huge bonus over there. And there are some plans for that. And every bullet point that's been brought up for doing this is good, it's right. I mean, you can't even argue against it. I'm going to be very particular on where the money comes from. I think, I want to see, I want to rob Peter to pay Paul. I don't want to see any of the 2.5 million dollars that's coming from the half a percent sales tax go to that. I don't want to go into any long-term debt. I've done a lot of deals that are owner-carry. And I understand Northern Arizona Healthcare is going to be very generous in working with us and doing an owner-carry deal here, and it can be done. I can see the numbers. It's very doable, very easily done. And it's a pretty good deal what they're offering us and it's a big help what they're offering us. So, I mean, that's where I'm at. I've looked at it and I've looked at it seriously and I spent a lot of time and I said, "I'm familiar with these kind of deals." And it's something that would be good for the future of Cottonwood. And if we don't do it now, that's fine, I'll move on. But I think we really need to, I think we need to make a shot at it. I think we need to go for it.
Do you feel a $50,000 investment would get us to a point where we could get a set of 10% drawings to where we could really get some more information on how much this is truly going to cost?
Mr. Mayor, I do, we would do an RFP so that we could look at what people would do for that amount of money and we would pick what we believe we need to help make that answer versus just going out and selecting someone we know. I really want to make this as transparent as possible and make sure we get the information we need to make the right decision. Again, I feel it's important that you guys have more information so that you can make the right decision.
And where does this $50,000 magically come from?
It'll come out of money already budgeted and I'll have to hubble that together.
So, you don't know where it would come from? It would come out of the general budget somewhere?
It would, it would come out of the general fund.
Which is already pretty slim and we cut, I, it's $50,000, you know, I mean, $50,000 is an FTE, I mean.
No. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Alt House, we're not having to cut any positions to do this. Rudy and I have spoken and we feel like we can find the $50,000 to do that. That's the max. Also, that's not my goal. We'd like to do as little as possible, but this will not affect any employee position. I really do feel like we could do it.
I didn't mean that it would affect an employee. I just meant that with $50,000, you could get another employee. What I was thinking in my head was, you know, you could bring on another person at the rec center or somebody that could keep the library open all day on Monday, you know. And so, I'm just asking, you know, where does this $50,000 come from?
Mayor, council, you know, traditionally, this is one of those things that we do have budget authority. The only thing is, we're going to have to go back and try to figure out where it comes from. We don't, we didn't want to go through the exercise and go through departments trying to figure out where we could, in a sense, try to package this together if council wasn't even think about it because then it puts our ID department head that we're going to talk to on alert that, oh, they're doing something. We'd much rather say, if you will give us a direction, then we will go back and find that money from department. It won't increase the budget, we will have to just find the money from other departments or we have some, we still have some undesignated reserves. We also have the city manager's contingency, so we've at least got to start there. We just don't want to go ahead and make other departments. We just don't want to go after departments if we don't need to. Once you tell us, then we'll go ahead and see where the balance of it will come from.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add, that really is, I wanted to start here. You know, I've talked to different councilmembers individually and I don't have a feeling for direction. So, I didn't want to go start creating work for staff if this was a dead-on arrival, just to be honest with you. So, this really is my starting point of making a plan.
I understand.
Rudy, while you're up here, I have one more question that I was going to ask in a few minutes on this topic, so I'll just go ahead and ask it. How much do we currently have in reserves? Approximately, I'm not going to hold you to it.
Overall reserves, what are you talking about, cash in reserves? I wouldn't know that at this point in time. We have at least a million dollars in our capital CIP fund that we've held on to for years. Council has asked not to increase, but not to release that particular amount. So, we've got that right away. As far as others, we have council receivables and other cash availability, but I'm not sure exactly what that amount is. We can easily take that out of that particular CIP reserve if we need to and replenish it next year.
No, it's unrelated to the $50,000. My question on the reserves is, I believe our monthly claims and adjustments, I have to think, I had to do the motion in my head to think of the word as like 1.5 million that we have to pay out every month. And so, you know, my concern is, again, you know, similar to my councilmember Matthews is, you know, where does this money, you know, come from? And we talked about this before, this, you know, I think councilmember Henry and I joked about, you know, a magical money tree, you know. We don't have money in our reserves to even cover one month, it sounds like, if a recession hits, just to pay all of our claims and adjustments. And then, we're talking about a $6 million or more expenditure. And so, again, I'm just, I'm struggling with even having this conversation again because I thought we had voted and we were four no's and three yeses and then we were done.
Councilmember, you know, this is part of our due diligence to make sure that we go, if we're going to go for $6 million or whatever that amount may be, we don't know what it is. This is at least a starting point. You know, it's to the point where we want to do our due diligence so we can give you some accurate information. We've been tossing around all kinds of numbers from 4 to 6 and plus. But we can't do anything until, we don't feel that you can make an educated decision if you don't at least have something out there. And the $50,000 or whatever it is, we're asking for a ceiling at this point. It's but a drop in the bucket so we can give you, so we can do our due diligence for you. If we can't even consider $50,000, $6 million would be out of the question. So, to us, it's kind of, we're just trying to find, get your authorization to do our job so we can give you something to work with.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, that is really, again, I want to have a finance question when I know what that number is because depending on what that number is, will change our recommendations on what to do. So, yes, it's all connected, but we're just not ready to have that conversation.
And I think that's really what's hindering us from making an informed decision, is just lack of information. So, I, you know, I think it's a solid investment in getting that information so that this board can make a decision that is well-informed and there are no surprises. We don't want surprises. Any other thoughts?
Personally, I think the council was clear that they were not interested at this time in going forward with this building. I, for one, don't think it's the appropriate place to have our city hall and I have said that before. And if we're looking to expand and have more space for people, I think one thing to consider that in the future, and I've heard this 50-year building thing kicked around, you know, we've got to have building for 50 years and all these people that are going to be working there. I don't see it moving that way, I see it moving to technology, less people. It's already happening, you know. We're already headed in that direction. And so, I think technology is going to be the coming thing, not a bigger building for more people because we're not going to have more people working. And we won't be around in 50 years. And we won't be around in 50 years, unless some of you, something I don't. You know, and.
Technology.
And if we're basing our, our decision and projecting out 50 years, I, I don't see it. One of the things that, that council member Alt House brought out was the fact that she didn't feel it was right that we were asked to consider, and actually, it got passed a TPT tax, okay? And to turn around immediately, and that's because we needed the funds. How many times did we hear that? We needed the funds. Well, and it doesn't make sense to, to turn around and say, okay, we're going to tax you more, get these funds, but now we're going to go out there and spend $6 million and put it on top of the debt that this community carries. And one of my concerns is the amount of money that this community is in debt for. Those are real numbers. And, and if you don't consider that, I don't think anything else is, should be considered. There's a lot of money that is owed right now. And I, and nothing has changed. The last time we discussed this and, and voted on it, nothing has changed. I venture to say that the, the city debt is still hovering around that 69 million mark. I, I'm not sure. But I just don't see it. We've talked before about building our own place. We don't know what that's going to cost because we don't have numbers for it. We don't have a location for it. We've talked before of, okay, we'll get a location, we'll save some money, we sell these buildings down here, and, and we've got the money for that. What happened to that? It's all been thrown aside for rough cut. To me, there's been an obsession with that building. To me, it's a white elephant. And, and I, I just don't see that building being appropriate for city hall. You look at the list of things that, that were just brought up by our, our library guy here. And where on that list of things that, that people were asking for this community, was there, was there any mention of, of a city hall? Nowhere. And I, I don't think we're, you know, people can say, well, we got to get under one roof. You don't have to get on the wrong roof. We got emails, we've got telephones, we've got, you know, we've got city cars if you got to drive somewhere. It's not the idea of being under one roof. And I think we, we service this community very well, very well. You're always going to get complaints, you know? People want to build something, they want it right away. It's taking too long, they're sitting back on it, it's the city's fault. No, we have procedures and they have to be met. And you can't expect a permit overnight just because it's your house or your project. You know, that just fries me every time I hear that. And, and it happens in the county. And, and it, and it happens probably everywhere. Because people want it instantly right now. So I'll, I'll lay that one to rest. But I just don't see it. I, I, I have been opposed to buying this building since day one. I believe one of the things that council member Henry brought up is that throughout this whole process, the hospital has dictated everything. We've never had negotiations, we've never had any of that, you know? Never. We were told, this is what we want and, and we'll, we'll do this for you. And, and I'm going to venture to say one thing. Why does the hospital still have this building? Because nobody wants to buy it. One of the things was, and then we had the hospital people here. And that man stated, I don't know his name and I don't care that I don't know his name. But he mentioned the fact that, that they have passed up other serious buyers waiting for us. And on that meeting that night, I said, if you got a buyer, sell it to them.
Me neither.
You got a, you got a buyer hot to go, do it. So I, I just can't see this. And, and I want to tell you something else. That, that letter that was written to you by this individual, to me, that's a slap in the face to this council. This council made a decision. And if that person can't respect it, I don't know. That, that, that letter fried me. You know, it was one of these wah-wah cry, oh God, you know, we waited for you and you did this, you did that. Garbage. Disrespect to this council. Okay.
Hard act to follow, but are there any other council members?
I just had a question about a letter. Is there a concern? Are your community members?
No, I think the letter that council member Hodig is referencing is one that was written by Tom Emmon from NAH.
That's the name.
That the, the council received. It's been some months back, I believe. Did you have any? Okay. Any other thoughts?
I'm with Rib, but I, I don't think, you know, we should move forward, you know, with this, with rough cut. I think we voted, and I know that we have a new city manager and that's why we're, we're discussing it again and, and I respect that. I, I also toured the building and it's going to need a lot of work. And it's huge. And it's just, you know, it's not, not right for us.
And I, and I know we, you know, we have, we've agreed on a lot of things. And over a year ago, maybe two years ago, we agreed on the, the need for consolidated city hall. I think we, most of us kind of agreed that that would be a good thing. We agreed that we have a lot of property that we're really not using to the best benefit. We agree that we would sell that property, dispose of it, to put money into a fund to, you know, bolster an account that we would then purchase or build a city hall with. We've identified different parcels, you know, and we, so I think we're all kind of heading in the same direction. This rough cut building has come up. I think it is, I, I think it's a good opportunity. But we really can't make any decision until we have more information. So in my mind, I think we're all, we're all aligned. I think we're more aligned than, than we are apart on this issue. I'm not talking about rough cut specifically. I just mean the issue of, should we or shouldn't we consolidate city services? I think we recognize the need. Again, just that this opportunity's come up, I think, is what's driving this conversation. Personally, I think a $50,000 or less, $50,000 maximum investment is really what we need to have the information to make a decision. I still don't know if it's the best option because it's, it's twice as big as, as what we need. I think we can fill that space in an intelligent way that moves this community more forward. And I think we've identified some potential partners that would really be great to have onboard with the city, which I think would help with economic development and a lot of other ways. But again, we're not going to know these things until we have more information. So I'm still, I know you feel like there's an obsession with rough cut. And I hope I'm not the one driving the obsession, but I just feel like it's, it's something that, it's an opportunity. Is it, is it the best one that we have in front of us right now? I, I think it might be, but until we have those numbers.
Mr. Mayor, one of the reasons we want to do this also has to do, the other options would include building from the ground, on ground we already own. The prices I've seen for new builds are probably higher than the rebuild of this building, but I don't know for sure, which is why I want to do this. But we've gotten estimates back for the evidence building that hasn't happened and other things that I've seen with inflation on construction costs. And there was an argument at one point, you know, it's cheaper to build new than reconfigure. I'm not sure that is currently true, given construction prices, shortages of labor and those kinds of things. So again, this is just one thing to check off the list and move on to the next if the council decides not to do this. But I, I don't think we can automatically assume that a build from the ground up will be cheaper, even if we already own the land. Don't know, but I, I don't think it's a fair assumption that it used to be.
I think we're saying basically the same things we've said all, all over again. My recurring concern at each discussion is the lack of information. But tonight I have two concerns. First of all, I, I was all for, and I expressed this to some staff, I was all for additional information, but not when it's not budgeted. We're in February and we don't know where the money's going to come from. I don't feel comfortable authorizing us up to $50,000 without having a concrete source. What if something else happens, our reserves, et cetera? I am all for getting additional information if it's part of the next fiscal budget process and it makes sense with, within the budget as a whole. Also, my second concern, I thought the additional information was going to focus on all of our options and not just rough cut. Thought it was going to say, what is the cost, including with the building index increase? You know, at, if we were to save and budget every year for a new building or, you know, for, to, to buy or relocate somewhere else. I thought we were going to get concrete information that we'd asked for before about all of our options. Instead here, it's, we, we're looking at up to $50,000 that isn't budgeted and we're focusing on rough cut instead of, here are your options, here's how we can get to those options without taking on more debt. Or if there is debt, here's how we plan to pay for it. Here's what we will net from the sale of the buildings, et cetera. And then, you know, kind of the, the guided path to get there, thinking long-term. I do agree, I don't think these current, how we are currently now is the long-term solution. We've had some issues. I think that everybody that's, that's voiced an opinion tonight has raised valid concerns, one way or the other. And I think it comes down to, how are we going to pay for it? And, you know, what's the smartest move? And, and I agree. So I would be, I would be all in favor of getting additional information on all of our options as far as a long-term solution to our city hall discussion. But let's do it during the budget cycle. And again, if rough cut, if, if Mr. Emmon, you know, respectfully is, has other options, like they've said in the past, you know, then, then the timing just doesn't, isn't right now. And, and I, I, I don't want to change my position as far as, you know, there hasn't been new evidence, you know, to change our position from what we discussed the last couple of times. So that's, I would just like to do it in a more measured, thought-out process as far as what all of our options are.
Is it possible to obtain the price estimates for rough cut? And at the same time, with this $50,000 or less, to find out what the cost estimate would be to build a new city hall in a different location? Or would that just, would that, the, the $50,000 or the lesser amount be just to determine what would cost to do rough cut?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hulse, I believe we would need more money. I believe to get a good architect, engineer build out and to start the process of looking at a, another building option is going to take more money. I agree, getting all the information at once would be great. And if council so desires, I guess we can bring it back as a budget item for the next year. I mean, we, nothing says we can't do that. But it would be, it would be a significant, a larger investment. I was going with what I thought was probably one of the better options first, seeing if that worked. If it didn't work, then go try to spend as little money as possible until the decision is made. We've done, you know, we've spent a few thousand dollars to get a, a fit estimate and some other things done. But I really feel that they're not, I don't think we can get a good number, a cost number, off of what we've done so far. And really, you know, another way we could do this, Mr. Mayor, is tell us to go out and build a, you know, build a, a city hall. And then we'll, you know, kind of do an RFP and, and bring a, a, an architect onsite and kind of let them pick the site, pick the location, pick the building, whether it be rough cut or another building. I mean, I guess that is a possibility. Again, we're talking about some serious money upfront, usually a percentage of the estimated cost of a building. We could do that. Again, I was just trying to do it in what I thought was the least expensive way, but to get decent numbers.
I, I like, by smear, Henry's suggestion of bring it through the budget process. I mean, that's, we're in February, like she said. And, you know, find the money through the budget process and, and have it be a line item. I mean, it either makes it through the budget process or it doesn't. I mean, I, I really like that suggestion.
Did, did you have anything else to add, Councilmember?
Well, my, my concern is, is, is we've been kicking this can down the road for 15, 20 years. Whether we need a new city hall, we don't need a new city hall, where we need to put it. And I, I would like to see the whole issue be put to rest. We're going to build a new city hall, we're not going to build a new city hall. Rough cut would be the best location, rough cut would not be the best location. But I feel like we need to do the research, come to a conclusion of where we're going, how we're going to get there. And then do the planning to see how we pay for it, if we can pay for it. But I have heard that through planning and zoning, through community development, when site people come, first thing they do is, is go into either Casey's office or to the city manager's office. Site selector comes in, says, I want to find about, out about your city. And by the time they get through the introduction and find out how many places they have to go, they say, thank you, get in their car and they're never heard from again. So economically, we're, we're being damaged by being spread out. Site selectors don't look at a city as, as worth investing any kind of money into if they have to run all over. Things need to be centralized. And, and I don't know that rough cut is necessarily the right place. But I do think we need to, to budget and do some research and get some hard facts, hard numbers. And then come back and say, okay, this is what we need to do. Either we need to start saving for a city hall, we want to buy rough cut, or we have a place that we can build on already and this is what the cost is going to be. The bottom line is, is every day, every year that we wait, the price goes up for construction, for land, for all of it. It's just like everything else. You bought a car 10 years ago, you're in for a rude awakening today. That car 10 years ago isn't even what you're going to get in return for your car today. And you're going to pay double or more for what you paid 10 years ago for a comparable vehicle. So, you know, to me, it, it seems that we need to be making some decisions and putting it into a budget if we want to build a new city hall or we don't. But it needs to be resolved. This back and forth just doesn't work.
I'm going to agree with that, that I was kind of under the understanding that we were going to either move ahead or we were going to kill this thing and was not going to come up again. I can't tell you what I know and, and why I know what I know. And as much as I've looked at this and talked to them about the financing options, but we're not going to do it cheaper than this. It's, we're not. It's not going to happen. So if we're not going to go this and we're not going to move forward on this, we need to just kill the city hall issue and let them pick it up 10 years from now. Because, because we're not going to do it cheaper. And if we don't move forward with it, we need to just forget about it. Let another generation pick it up.
I, I would tend to agree. And I think that's why, why this issue is, I think, so important to me. And I think, again, a $50,000 investment off a $72 million budget is, 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 I don't mean to, I don't mean to make, make it sound like it's chump change, because of course it's not. Because like you said, Councilmember Alt House, that, that's a lot of money. And it is, but there's a lot of stake here too. And I think you're correct, Councilmember Matthews, when you say another generation will pick it up. Because it's, it's been discussed a generation and a half ago is when this first came up. So we've certainly, we, when I say we, I mean, the collective line of councils have been discussing this for a very long time.
I mean, it's a unique financing option that's been put on our table that would work very well. And I'm just getting ready to finish a 10-year financing deal that I did with somebody and it worked out great. But, so then we're just going to have to start making money. And like I said, 10 years down the future, they can bring it up again. It's going to cost a heck of a lot more.
Maybe in 10 years, they'll have money in their reserves.
They will. I mean, it's, it's horrible timing. It's horrible timing. We had a lot of money in reserves at one time.
Right.
Would you, Councilmember Hulse, feel like $50,000 is something you could invest in now or would, or not?
Based upon what the city manager said, yes, I think I would. I'd like to know how we were going to spend it. Are we going to spend it just strictly on figuring out rough cut? Or we could do a financial plan for rough cut as well as, okay, if we wanted to, if we didn't want rough cut and we wanted to build a building, what, what would be the difference? Could we compare both of them with that money, I guess, is my question.
Mayor, Councilmember Hulse, it's a fair question. What I know about construction and architects and engineers, you've been given previously estimates and options. Before I got here, you were given some rough numbers. And those are rough numbers. If you want more than that, you have to pay professionals to come in and do those numbers. And I don't know that it would be less than $50,000 to look at several options. You know, if, if the council so desires, we can bring it back at budget time and we can come up with a better plan. I mean, if it's council's desire and, and it's not unanimous clearly, but if, if council's in favor of a consolidation, then I can just bring one plan forward that I think is the best. You know, I, we, I, we can do that in the budget process and we can budget it out and, and do it that way. The uniqueness of the rough cut. The uniqueness of the rough cut building has to do with the financing. Um, you're going to hear later today about our, our, where we're at, but, on the budget year-to-date, at least based on, year-to-date is a strong word, based on what we've gotten from the Arizona Department of Revenue, where we're at currently. Um, we don't have, we couldn't write a check, you know, for six million dollars for a building. So the, the special thing that I see with rough cut is the financing options. Now, I don't want to go down that path because there's lots of different ways we could do it, it's complicated, and we'll bring it back. But before we know how much, what the financing's going to be, we need to know how much we're going to finance before we start negotiations with the hospital and the price, because I think everything is negotiable.
I agree with that.
You know, everything's negotiable. But I, at least, the big unknown to me, that I don't even have a real good firm starting point on, is what is it going to cost to fix the inside? As Councilmember Althaus talked about, there are holes in the ground, there's no infrastructure, there are stairwells that need to be made, there are, there are issues that will have to be addressed. So the idea with this is, um, I think this is our best financing option. I also think it has great opportunity with being, uh, a centerpiece of the ACE District, the Arts, Culture and Entertainment District on that end of town, while opening up this properties to, uh, entertainment, uh, uh, you know, more, um, businesses right here on, you know, right in the middle of Old Town. I, I think it, it can be the gateway to the river, to the, to the Verde River, to the state park out there. I, I just think it has lots of opportunities. But the key to me is, is that this will ha, will come with a, a financing option that other buildings, if we build from scratch, will not. Nobody else is going to float a loan of any kind for us. So, and I'm not saying we have to go that route, we'll decide that later down, later down the road, but this one comes with a unique opportunity that no other place that I'm aware of comes with. So that's probably why I'm starting with this building versus the, all the other options, is this is not a forever opportunity if council desires to, to consolidate services into one location, and this is an acceptable location.
I think fifty thousand dollars is a good bit of money, but give me the budget, I'll find five hundred thousand for you.
I think, the other thing, too, is it's, uh, oh, I lost my train of thought. The, uh, oh, I'm scared to see a red line, that's what I'm scared of. Never mind.
At the end of the day, um, I've got to go back to, I guess, a recurring theme. I've not had one single member of the community email me, call me, pull me aside and say, "We really want a new city hall." I've had many business owners, community members say, "It's not ideal having you in Old Town." I mean, all of the things that we, that are in our packet about why we should be moving. But I also, um, you know, this is coming from, mostly from staff, council, and, um, I, I just think it's got to make really good financial sense for me to be able to be on board with it. And I've already, I mean, I'm going back to, again, if we're going to do this, I, I don't agree, I, I think everything that you, all of your points tonight, Councilmember Matthews, were sound, but I don't agree with it either now or never. I think we do need to put something in place so that we, ten years from now, council's not sitting here having the same discussion, but it's got to make sense for the, you know, the people I represent and not just be, "We're in a hurry and we think this is a good deal." Um, and it might be more expensive later. We don't, we don't know, you know, especially with a recession that might be coming that we keep hearing about, et cetera, so...
I suppose one thing that we could do if council wanted to, is if we did invest the fifty thousand dollars, come up with a ten percent design and then get a, a cost estimate, a solid cost estimate off of that design, we could compare that with what new construction would cost. Of course, that would be a range, but I think for, you know, municipal construction from ground up, I think that range is, would probably be somewhat narrow. And we could compare the cost to build out, do tenant improvements on the existing shell to new construction. And of course, we do have land that we already own, so we wouldn't have the cost of land. But we could also look at other building sites, too, that maybe we don't own, but which might more, be more ideal, or land swap or whatever else. We've looked at all that stuff in the past, too. But I think we would have a comparative there if council wanted to move forward with investing fifty thousand dollars.
Well, I, I thought that the hospital had volunteered to help out with some of the costs for the architectural studies. Is that not the case?
I think I might have a little more of an history on that. When we first began this discussion, that, that was, that was floated. Subsequently, that, that, that offer became, it, it turned out not to be a, a concrete offer.
Oh.
But it was, and, and that, that offer, to me, anyway, was communicated through somebody who was not acting as an agent of the hospital, Mr. Mungini.
So, it, to me, we've, I mean, we've kicked this around, we're, we're clearly, um, you know, three against spending it and three possibly for spending it. So we're, we're clearly, I mean, we're divided and, you know, um, I think we can, we can stay here till midnight if we wanted to and keep talking about it, but we're, we're, it's not going to change. We're going to be three-three on this or, um, and I'm willing to stay if you all want.
I guess pretty clear. We're deadlocked.
We're, we're, yeah, we are, we're a hung jury.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I, you may be, um, equally divided on the fifty thousand dollar question or the fifty, on the fifty thousand, but I don't see equal divide on moving forward with something. Um, and coming back to council with a better plan during the budget process is, is kind of what I did see, that if we could come up with something. Again, I cannot, I would not bring back to council, you know, a significant large amount of money just to play the options. Um, so, you know, we can go back to the drawing board and, and if council so desires, we can bring it back one more time during the budget process. If, um, I did hear some motions for that. I think at that point, the rough cut building might be off the table, but like some, some said, you know, so be it. Um, and we'll, we'll work with what we have. But, um, again, that's not universal either, but i, i, I did hear at least some open to that option of coming back during the budget process.
I agree. I, I think we're, we're more united than divided on this. I think we all, we're divided on the rough cut specifically.
Yeah.
But I, I think we're all agreed that something needs to be done.
Well, one thing for sure, that building will still be there.
I, I think it's a matter, I mean, in the budget, we're going to be banking reserves. And so then, I think that's the future of it, then, is banking those reserves and sometime down the road, they'll look at taking those reserves and consider a city hall.
Wait for the recession to hit when, uh, things are cheaper.
So then you have your direction?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. All right, moving on then to item three, is update on the city's current revenue forecast and review of the budget process.
Oh, Mayor and Council, Kirsten Lemon, Financial Services Director. We're going to talk about the upcoming budget cycle and then a review of last year's revenue and this year's very rough estimates on the revenue, because basically I have one month of the new sales tax, so I can't really give you a really good number. That being said, we'll go to the, maybe, whatever. Um, again, a review, oh, I went too far, sorry about that. I'm not going to touch it, because I don't think I touch it, it goes, too. We started our budget kind of in the October, November timeframe, and Edman presented the calendar to you, and we started distributing information to the departments. Um, you had your strategic plan, then we have, um, hopefully, city manager has met with you to discuss your priorities. And in February, as, this is a new portion of our budget process, which our first meeting is fall, and then we're having a meeting next week with staff to find out if they have any cost cutting measures that they would like to see implemented and any ideas for budget that they have. And we're trying to get all staff involved, make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak on what, how they feel the budget should be prepared. Then we're getting ready to distribute the departmental budgets, which gives them six months of history for the beginning of the year, so that they can plan where they will be at the end of the year and they can start getting their budget ready for next year and their budget requests on just their line items, not staffing, not, um, we put those numbers in for them. Um, and then March, we'll meet and discuss those budgets, and then April, we actually get real good revenue numbers, because we'll have, um, seven months of numbers it, from revenue, and we'll get the numbers from the state, so the state shared revenues, the MV Lou tax and those items that we don't have yet. And then in March, April timeframe, Helen and I will be busy trying to get the base budget figured out. And that's just the main dollar values, like this is what every department thinks they need for the year for their office supplies and those items and salaries. Um, has no capital or any personnel, additional personnel in there. And then we'll meet with you to discuss and present the budget in April, June. Um, and we also added a new section for May-July timeframe to do some extra presentations for citizens, so that we can get their feedback and give them presentations on where the budget is going. And then hopefully in June-July timeframe, we adopt a budget and then we turn around and we get that prepared to present to GFOAZ for the budget award. And then we start all over again in November.
Kirsten, if I, if I can add, um, council's asked for a couple of things that we've already tried to do for this year's budget that I've made a commitment to even improve on next year. We've added a time for, uh, the budget team to go out and meet with citizens before you guys have made a final decision, so we'll be able to get some of their input, make them aware of the process that's going through. Again, uh, she talked about the employee outreach, um, who knows better than the people doing the work? And so we're hoping, um, that we get some good information from them. And then in the next few weeks, I'll start meeting individually with council members to, to get their initial guidance. Again, you're not a, nothing in stone or anything, but just a little guidance as we begin the, the budget formulation.
So this is just the calendar again, you all saw the calendar before, and then this is just to, just to re-show you that this is how we have planned out our year and how we, when we send things out and when we expect them back from the departments. All the way to September. So, um, just an overview of the document itself, I kind of gave you an overview last year, just to make, just kind of the key major points in the document, and that is the executive summary that talks about the current financial outlook and, um, employee benefits and investment policies. And then there's a strategic paint plan, and that's a five-year capital plan that we put in the budget that just kind of, I guess it's, it's a, you know, this is what we would like to see in the next five years. It doesn't mean it happens, it doesn't mean that we have the funding, it doesn't mean, but this is the idea of setting out that long-term goal, just to be able to see where we might end up. Then we have a major revenue, which I'm going to be going over the major revenues in a few minutes, and this is actually in the budget, but will be updated with the new 2020 figures in the budget document. And then we have, um, comprehensive summary, which is all of the funds consolidated to one eye, line, one page, shows you everything, revenues and expenses and what our dollar, bottom dollars. And as you know, we have to have a, a balanced budget, so our revenues have to match our And we have the financial information section, and this is all the breakout, all the general fund, the special revenue funds, the enterprise and proprietary funds, fiduciary funds, debt service, capital. And every single one of those has every department inside it and a summary and, you know, consolidates it all, but breaks it all out as well. It also has a lot of description about the department and what, um, their accomplishments or, and goals are, which they've been giving to you, and we'll be giving you some more after I'm done. So you've seen those, um, and then it also talks about the performance indicators and if there is any capital budgeted, the summary of expenses and revenues for that department and a personnel listing. And then at the back of the budget, you have your glossary and all the acronyms, because you know we're finance and government, we like acronyms.
Yes, you do.
So, our major revenue sources are our local TPT tax, um, state shared income tax, state shared transaction privilege tax, vehicle license tax, investment income and, um, building permits, fines and forfeitures, franchise fees, highway user revenue funds, um, local transportation assistance funds, which we'll see in a minute, we haven't had any since two thousand and eight or nine, wastewater revenues and water revenues. So local transaction privilege, uh, privilege tax. The years before the last tax increase of point eight up to the three percent have now dropped off. So we're in the ten-year timeframe here, you can see that, um, my estimate for 2019 ending is an estimate. I kind of took where we were trending and said, "Well, if we had this much in, in the increase in our taxable sales to this point, this is where we should end up at the end of the year." It's an estimate, it's pretty rough for me. Um, I, I would have liked to have a better number for you, but we get the state's figures like two months behind, so that's how come it takes so long. So you can see we're estimating that the, um, increase will be about eleven percent, but that is with the point five percent sales tax increase included. So, when we presented the half-cent sales tax increase, we also said that we would allocate sixty-three percent to reserves, and we had broken it out as a sixteen percent general fund reserve, thirty-seven percent to HERF streets and transit, and ten percent to the pension liability funding, and the remaining thirty-seven percent was going to go for budgeted capital, personnel requests and those items. So urban revenue share, um, this is a number that we get from the state. It's a two years, the, the revenue's from two years ago, and they give us the estimate and it's a flat amount. They just say this is what we're giving you, and they give us that monthly for the year. And it's down a little bit this year from last year. State shared transaction privilege tax, these are also, um, from the state and it's based on city population and given to us by the state as this is your number that you will get. And it is too an estimate, because they give us an estimate and I just based that number off what the estimate they gave us. Vehicle license tax, um, this is a portion of the motor vehicle tax, given to us by the state. Our investment income, um, obviously you can see it's been kind of up and down, we've spent a lot of our reserves, so our investment isn't that large, so we're not getting that much in interest income at this point. And interest rates are low still. They're not really rising at this, they are up a little bit, but not very much. Building permits, you can kind of see how it's, um, as the economy's improved, we've had more construction and therefore had more building permits and more revenues from the building permits. Fines and forfeitures, this, these are court fines, and this, this is an unknown, since, you know, you don't know what's going to happen with the state and with the laws and tickets and fines, so... Franchise fees, these are set. We have franchise fees from APS, um, we have a, an electric franchise fee, a cable franchise fee and a gas franchise fee, and they're set at those percentages, and it's based on their sales. And it's up a little bit, three percent. Highway user revenue fund, this comes from the state as well. They enacted the new public safety fee, uh, that's supposed to be going into place this year, and so they have said that they're not going to sweep the HERF funds. We may see this revenue go up a little bit if that public safety fee stays in place. I know that there are some people who are trying to fight it, so, um, hopefully we will see this go up a little bit this year. And HERF revenues all go into the streets. And HERF revenues all go into the streets, street department and street construction. Like I said, the transportation assistance fund, the LTAF, last time we got it was in two thousand and ten, and I don't anticipate we'll get any this year as well. Wastewater fees, user fees, they've trended up slightly, um, part, some of that is when we had our increase in two thousand and sixteen, so the fee went up, that's why there's a jump there. Same thing with the water user fees, um, it's pretty steady in that, and water fees can be based on the, the weather and the climate, so if it's hotter, we use more water and... Okay, so this was our two thousand and eighteen fund balance reserve policy, and mainly we had, um, funded the sixteen point six-six percent of our expenditures, which is the thirty-day coverage.
The sixty days.
Sixty days. And then, um, the one million dollars that we have in the CIP, which we have had that and it was capped a few years ago, it's always at a million dollars. So there is that million dollars in cash sitting out there. Herf and transit, we didn't fund that. The library was funded from zero to five percent. Enterprise funds is partially funded and our debt, debt service covenant are funded. We always make sure that we have our, at least one debt service payment ready to go. So our two thousand and nineteen fund balance policy for this year shaped out a little bit differently. We funded the sixteen point six-six percent and the one million, and then we took the additional half-cent sales tax, and as I said before, we did sixty-three percent to reserves based on general fund, HERF streets, transit and pension liabilities, and then the remainder went into the budget to cover capital and personnel requests. Twenty twenty, we had said that we were going to continue to fund the sixteen point six-six percent for the general fund and try to increase that to twenty percent if revenues allow. We're going to keep the one million, keep all the other fund policies that we had before, but change it for two thousand and twenty for the point five percent sales tax increase to have eighty percent go to specific areas. General fund reserves of fifteen percent, HERF and streets of twenty-five percent, transit twenty percent, pension funding liability, um, ten percent, ten percent for infrastructure and capital and the remaining general twenty percent after the eighty percent to reserves was going to go into the general fund to do general fund programming. So this is a ten-year historical look at our general fund fund balance. Back in two thousand and ten, it was seven million and the estimate for two thousand and nineteen is a little under three million. This is the capital projects fund, fund balance, and back in two thousand and ten, it was thirteen, fourteen and a half, almost fifteen million, and this was designated to use to do capital projects. We did restrooms at three parks, we did rec center, we did a communication center, and we did a wastewater treatment plant at Riverfront. This is the HERF fund balance and non-major governmental, which is tiny like grant funds, and then the debt service fund, fund balance, and you can see there was a spike in two thousand and fifteen, and that was when we bonded for the money to do the Mingus Avenue projects, um, Mingus Avenue Street and a couple of other projects. And as you can see, we've spent that down because we're, well, I estimate will be done in two thousand and nineteen as we finish up Mingus Avenue. It, you know, we could end at, in two thousand and nineteen still with fund balance in there if Mingus doesn't get completed by the end of the year. So this is a general fund and all non-major funds, so basically in, in our accounting world, we kind of lump everything together. The general fund and all the non-major funds, except for water and wastewater, they're their own enterprise funds, they're separate, so you can see that, um, the orange is our resources and the blue line is our costs and the gray is our ending funding balance. So our costs have often been more than our resources. Um, this year, our resources are more than our costs, but our fund balance dropped because we used those reserves to finish up the wastewater, the Riverfront plant. And that was from all the non-major funds, so that's from debt service, um, the capital improvement fund and some from the general fund. So this is just a graph to show you like sales tax collections over the last few years, and as you can see, it's been increasing since two thousand and ten. Luckily, we're, we've finally reached the same numbers or higher numbers in sales than we had before the economy dropped and the recession. And, that's coming off the chart there. And, and as you can see, um, two thousand and seventeen taxable sales equaled or exceeded pre-recession numbers and two thousand and eighteen taxable, and nineteen taxable sales are up. We are, we are looking pretty good, it's like averaging about a three percent increase. And with that, I'll answer any questions you have.
Questions for Ms. Lennon? No?
Thank you.
Not a one?
That was...
I wish I did. All right.
Thank you.
So now we're going to have, um, the pre-department presentation, budget presentations from library, parks and rec, pool, youth center, recreation center, custodial, community development and transit, and they're going to come up in that order and introduce themselves.
All right, first up is library. Welcome back.
Hello, the library guy. Ryan Bigelow, director of the Cottonwood Public Library. Uh, so I'm going to talk to you a little bit about our accomplishments. You saw, uh, what I would consider a big accomplishment, just a lot of community outreach and touching base with a lot of folks and letting them know what we're doing. So the strategic plan is a, is a, is a big priority and a big accomplishment. Created a lot of new programs this year, or had a little bit different take on programming. Um, we were able to have a bi-weekly, uh, English as a second language program, um, and that's been very successful. Uh, one-on-one technical assistance classes for smartphones, tablets and laptops. Um, we've had some open mic nights, uh, which encourage poetry and author readings from local authors. We were able to work with the Bruce Morrow and the astronomers of the Verdi Valley and hosting a, a star party and a solar viewing party. We hosted an owning up program, uh, by partnering with Yavapai County, and that teaches children or teens social responsibility. Um, we received a twenty-five hundred dollar LSTA grant for STEAM toys and STEAM kits for the kids. Um, and, uh, we worked with the network, the Yavapai County Library Network, and now we have a free mobile app so you can access your entire catalog from your smartphone. Um, and of course, we, uh, we received the best community spirit award for the float in the Cottonwood Christmas Parade. You had to have seen that. Uh, a lot of those accomplishments, I think if you'll see that, they kind of list out that we're not just checking out books, right? We're, we're programming, we're bringing people into the library for a variety of different reasons. Some goals for upcoming here, uh, we would like to, I specifically would like to be pretty aggressive with grants, um, and, and get some grants going for computer AV replacements, um, anything that's tech-related. Love the library world because grants are out there, doesn't guarantee we get them, but, but we're definitely going to look for them. Uh, we want to expand the book and movie collection for the Spanish language. That's increased the need for, that's also to not only help the Hispanic population, but to help the English population learn Spanish as well. Um, and then I want to continue to approach the local leaders and have those conversations. The highlight of, of my presentation was talking to folks, and we're going to continue those conversations. Um, some of our performance indicators are just programming and, and people coming into the building, so we, we want to monitor and look at how many people were coming in for our programs. Um, we are a part of the Arizona SciTech Festival, so we want to make sure we have a lot of folks coming in for STEAM and, um, those types of events, so we'll be tracking that. Uh, we want to partner with the Cottonwood Community School for our summer reading program. Uh, you saw, you saw the statistics there, I think we can really help, um, and we want to make sure and encourage those folks to register and participate. Um, and then finally, we will, uh, we'll continue to monitor our computer logins, uh, so make sure that we're, people are accessing our free computers and free public wifi. That's all I've got.
Any questions for Ms. Bigelow?
Mr. Mayor, if I can add, uh, their most recent accomplishment was getting some new furniture from the hospital, and it just goes to show that staff is continually looking for ways to save money yet improve services. They were able to work with them and, and not all the chairs would work for what they needed, but they were able to get some for their sitting areas, which I thought was really good, so kudos to Ryan and the team continuing to, to improve services at no cost.
Great.
Thanks.
It's impressive.
They, they promised me that we could use those chairs at Roughcut. But I'm glad you got them. Good. Mr. Allen.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thanks for hanging there, in there with us tonight and thanks for your service. Um, I'm going to go over the Parks Recreation Department and our larger investment center, the Recreation Center. So the general thought process is you have the Parks Recreation Department, is the overall umbrella, under that you have youth center, facilities, parks, things like that, and then there is the Recreation Center. Um, the Parks Recreation Department oversees city facilities, park, open space areas, facilities, service and pass, uh, facilities, active and passive recreation services as well. Such services provide avenues of involvement for a cross-section of the individual groups and families to participate in a wide variety of activities and special community events. Overall, pillars building community and obviously providing a vibrant community, city. Some of our larger accomplishments for two thousand and eighteen is Thunder Valley Rally achieved a cost recovery of around ninety-two percent. We are closer, much closer to the opening of the Cottonwood Community Clubhouse. Uh, we received a USDA grant of around sixty-four thousand five hundred dollars to do AV at the facility. The Brian Mickelson Memorial Marathon underwent a successful rebranding this year, kind of focusing a little more on the wine world. Youth center served an average of seventeen area youth per day during the after-school program and thirty-four per day during the summer camp. Uh, obviously the CDBG grants of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars will kick off the master planning process for the community. We were able to, through the BAC, um, update the Cottonwood Bicycle Plan. Um, we also received a Trails grant of a hundred and seven thousand dollars from State Parks. Um, we started a design process for Riverfront Park. Obviously, there's a lot more accomplishments, but those kind of the ones that I gave you the Cliff Notes on. Um, our goals for two thousand and nineteen is finalize the Riverfront Park Master Site Plan, develop a Thunder Valley Rally Foundation, implement phase one of three of the Cottonwood Riverfront Trails Master Plan through the State Parks Grant Program, develop additional community programs, develop a transportation program using department vans, enable more youth to participate, participate in the youth centers program, and begin the implementation of the Parks Open Space Recreation and Wayfinding Master Plan. And then lastly, create a new city brand-inspired special event together with other organizations. Any questions on the Parks Recreation Department?
Questions for Mr. Allen?
Nope.
No? Just, uh, the, so the Riverfront Park Master Site Plan is separate from the CDBG funds that you were awarded, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep, but it will be pulled onto, under the umbrella of the overall master plan for the community.
All right. And then the new city brand-inspired special event, any thoughts on that, what that looks like?
Uh, like our brand?
A picture of me?
Exactly. Maybe with a glass of wine.
I was thinking of something different. I'm just curious if you, if, if, what's come up, you know, as, as far as ideas go?
Definitely, it's a great, a great conversation, Mr. Mayor. Uh, one of the thoughts we've had as a department is obviously, uh, Tilted Earth went back to Page Springs Cellars, it was a marquee event for the community, really aligned closely with the city's brand. Um, I think going somewhere down that road, what it looks like, we don't have a clear idea yet. Um, I think, Mayor, you're big on partnerships and I think for something like this to happen, we're going to have to be able to partner with other organizations. So what that looks like at this point, we really have to conduct outreach and see where the variables are, see where the opportunities are.
Okay.
I would add, I've had a lot of people, and has you and I have talked about this, I've had a lot of people, um, who really liked Rhythm and Ribs and the, you know, and then it got kind of funky with, with the, um, how it was, you know, tried to move towards more of a professional barbecue competition, but that, that competition among our, our local, um, uh, restaurants, restaurant owners, chefs, you know, people really enjoyed Rhythm and Ribs and, and have asked, you know, is the city ever going to think about bringing something like that back? And I think it can be incorporated in with a wine, you know, theme, you have to have beer there too, but, I mean, barbecue, but you know, I, I think, you know, people, people enjoy stuff like that, and they have asked.
One of the problems we ran into with Rhythm and Ribs with the locals were the last two events, we had, uh, restaurants or individuals sign up and then didn't show up. Now, last year, we had what, one, I think it was just, uh, I can't think of his name, he's out of business, but we had one...
Nate.
Nate, thank you. Nate was the only one that showed up the last year that we had Rhythm and Ribs, the rest of them were not there, other than the ones from Kansas City Barbecue Association.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add, I actually had the, uh, privilege of meeting with, uh, Parks' leadership team today, and it goes back to what Ryan brought up earlier about creating opportunities for connections, and I really believe our Parks has the best position to help create those opportunities, and it's about serving our local community, our local residents and our kids and our families that are here, and so I think part of this branding will go down that way. We're not talking necessarily about a logo, we're talking about branding what Parks and Recreation does for the community and how we sell ourselves and, and brand ourselves. And for me personally, my direction has been create those opportunities, create those, uh, they don't always have to be big and, and bad and, you know, out of the world, it's, it's those little moments that make a difference in somebody's lives that, that I'm talking, that I'd like our Parks and Recs, uh, team to focus on.
Very good. All right.
Okay. Uh, moving on to the Cottonwood Recreation Center, uh, we refer to this as, this is probably the larger investment center for the department, um, it's kind of a play on cost center. The Cottonwood Recreation Center operates on the concept of bringing multi-generational families, youth and active senior adults together to enjoy and share in the recreational benefits provided that contribute to the city's quality of life. The center provides community wellness options, gathering spaces, community events and athletic programming opportunities that serve a wide range of guests. Facility's open three hundred and fifty-five days a year. Um, some of our larger accomplishments, uh, we finished the LED installation for lighting systems throughout the facility, we've seen pretty substantial savings from that. Um, as of January twenty nineteen, we started our fourth fitness program called AARP Medicare Supplement Plan through United Healthcare. Installed small lockers free of charge for the storage of keys, cell phones and other small items to prevent theft. Local school districts, so if you, if you're not aware, the school district this year, kind of a real quick, school district started their own kind of youth basketball program. Uh, we were a little concerned on what, how that would affect our program, and, and what we found is that our participation not only probably stayed steady, but possibly could have grown a little bit, um, and obviously pickleball, pickleball play is, is growing as well. Some of our goals for two thousand and nineteen are increase overall cost recovery for the facility. Sixty-two percent is kind of where we're staying at right now, which, which is great, so we're mandated, uh, we would always love to increase that number. Develop in-house strategic plan to market the program offerings, uh, determine return on investment for our banquet rooms. We want to figure out what it costs to operate our banquet rooms and then figure out how does our fee structure align with that. Implement a customer service training program, conduct membership needs assessment survey. Um, this really pertains to, uh, fitness equipment for the facility, what do we need to add, take away, uh, what's the future? Reduce service charges cost by thirty percent, equaling a savings of eleven thousand eleven hundred dollars, and increase facility programming to include one new community event every two months. Any questions? Any questions?
Questions? No? No?
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Faust?
Richard Faust, Community Services General Manager for the city of Cottonwood. Good evening, Council. Just information-wise, Custodial Services is basically a working program out of the Community Services Department, handles the cleaning and sanitizing of the city-owned buildings, totaling approximately 157,560 square feet. This, this program does not deal with groundskeeping, which has been asked for before. The one thing about the Custodial Services program started in 1999 and 2000 in the city, so we've actually been running a contract program for custodial since that time period. Prior to that, we ran an in-house program with approximately five employees, with a supervisor, so there was actually six employees, and that ran from approximately, I think it was 1989 to about 1999. So just to give a little bit of historical precedence there. The 2019 accomplishment says, this is the second year for the program under Melton and Sons LLC of Cottonwood, Arizona, doing fairly well. Actually, we're seeing probably better response times from this group, again, probably because they're local, which is great. The other thing is, is we're also seeing that they actually have a better scoring out of our criteria rating on a monthly basis with our liaison people. We have 14 liaisons throughout the city of Cottonwood at each department, I should say, there's one throughout each one of the buildings, basically, so we get a pretty good idea of what's going on on a monthly basis. There's a lot of communications, contacts, calls with the custodial company, and so again, they're able to respond fairly quickly, which is really a good thing. So again, this is our second year, we started the program with Melton and Sons in August of 2017. Met goals for reduction of complaints by 100 percent over a six-month period this past year. Also increased scoring, like I indicated, involving performance indicators from an average of 7.5 rating to a 7.75 rating out of a 10 possible, so they're getting much better than the previous contractor, which was an average of about 7 to 7.1. And so we're seeing that ranking a lot better throughout the city. Also contracting of services has continued to provide for health or work environments for the city staff and also for the visiting public, and especially when you're looking at the library and the Recreation Center and the pools and facilities, so it's a good thing. The 2020 goals, I'll just hit on some of the highlights, continue to provide and offer quality full-service operations, which is great, while seeking ways to increase efficiency of services while minimizing operational costs overall. And again, that's done pretty much within house and again, within each department, as they try to strive for better cleaning operations as well as sanitizing and what we can actually get to the, the public as well at the various places where we service the public more. Also working with a contract and meeting current service requests and needs as established per departmental priorities. This includes reviewing service factors, monthly evaluations, as I had indicated before. We also do a culmination at the end of the year on our service factors as well as rating criteria. We add those up and we come to an end-of-year evaluation, and again, they're almost a full mark above where the previous contractor was, and when you're looking at that, the previous contractor was above the one before that. So it's actually kind of, we're seeing a progression of increased quality for services, which is really a good opportunity for all of us. We also provide more effective communications from contractor personnel to 14 city liaison staff through communications logs, monthly inspection reports, and email system reports and evaluations, which is great, keeps us on tab with them, and they can keep on tab with all of us. Also provide proper accountability and quality control through monthly contracts. That's the establishment of a high-level rating again, which we stated. Just kind of let everyone know again, we have about 157,560 square feet, 52,300 square feet of that is the Recreation Center, so we actually have outside the Recreation Center about 105,200 square feet. And are there any questions?
Questions for Mr. Faust? All right. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we sort of skipped over the Youth Center and the pool, was that looped into your presentation or is that, we're done with that?
I was getting under his presentation, so if you have any questions, we can...
No, we didn't, I just, it was on the agenda and I didn't know if you were going to mention, I'm sorry.
That's actually, I was going to say, that's usually melded within the context of what we always do with Parks and Recreation programs.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I'm not skipping over anything. No, we're good. Okay, sorry. Thank you. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Baron Najad for Community Development Department. We have three divisions in our department, Planning and Zoning, all the project starts, and Building and Safety, when the construction stage begins, and also Code Enforcement, to make sure all the properties and the community is within the guidelines of the city. And we provide services in our department to the City Council, Planning and Zoning Commission, Code Review Board, CRB, Historic Preservation Commission, Board of Adjustments, and just recently, we created this Board of Appeals for the Building Department, and Bicycle Advisory Committee, and general public. And in the organizational chart, as you see, we have eight full-time employees. And accomplishments, you should have received our annual report we prepared, that shows with all the divisions together. And just the highlights of it, we adopted the 2012 International Building Code. Previously, we were functioning under the 2009, and state adopted 2012, so we had to be complying with that. Just very recently, county is going toward the 2018, and we are hoping we'll adopt that soon too in our goal. And adopted dark sky ordinance, we are very close, it took a while, but we are very close to getting the designation. Completed our fifth annual Cottonwood Historic Home and Building Tour, and received the second consecutive year at matching grant for $12,000 and total of $20,000 for the HPC, Historic Preservation Commission, study for the inventory for the historic buildings in the city, and initiated a new outreach for the code enforcement, include newsletters and the utility bills, and these were published in the Facebook and the website to promote the voluntary compliance or education and education. We did several amendments into the, our zoning ordinance. Future goals, and revise and update the sign code to comply with the Supreme Court case Reed versus Town of Gilbert. We are working this ongoing case for us, and we are taking certain portions at a time, we hope to finish the entire ordinance. And again, as I mentioned earlier, adopt 2018 International Building Code. Again, this was initiated by the county, we would like to be with, same with the, all the other communities, and they are making big effort to make sure that all the communities are adopting 2018. We are hoping to do that next year or this year. Again, secure $12,000 matching fund for HPC, for the Historic Home Inventory for Phase Two.[1246.13][1246.13](coughing) We are in the Phase Two, I'm sorry, to secure it for the Phase Three from SHPO, State Historic Preservation Office. And continue to address our zoning ordinances to promote businesses and development in ACE, Arts, Culture, and Entertainment District. This concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Questions from Council? No? Thanks, Ms. Najad, thank you. All right. Mr. Morrow?
Bruce Morrow, Transportation Manager for the city, and we enjoy it immensely. I'm going to probably go through this very quickly because it's a lot of numbers and it's pretty interesting to me, but might not be to you. I report directly to the Deputy City Manager. I have two supervisors that help me in this process. We have a dispatcher, scheduler, an administrative assistant, 10 full-time drivers, and a bunch of part-time workers. That's what keeps the wheels rolling. Cottonwood Area Transit, which includes now the Verde Links, provides transportation to the public for the city of Cottonwood, city of Sedona, Town of Clarkdale, we do go up to Yavapai College and the unincorporated Verde Villages. Services include the full fixed route services coupled with ADA paratransit service for passengers who are wheelchair confined or otherwise unable to get to a fixed route stop. For 2018, we finished the year with 165,000 rides provided, which is pretty good for our area. We traveled approximately 422,000 miles, which is just about to the moon and back in providing all our services. We anticipate, I was looking at the numbers, I just got the numbers from January, it looks like we're on a pace to hit about 165 or 100, between 165 and 168,000 rides this year, which again will be a record year. Our paratransit service provided over, just over 3,000 rides in 2018, at the end of 2018, on a contract that we have with Verde Valley Caregivers Coalition, they have a lot of their clients that are wheelchair-bound and need to get to places. So they contracted with us because we have all the wheelchair accessible vehicles. That's been a very good partnership with them, and it's been working out very well for a lot of people in the Verde Valley that need to get to doctor's offices and that sort of thing. Our goals, together with stakeholders, we're going to try and seek funding to provide a viable and sustainable service, not only to the unincorporated areas around Cottonwood, but also to the village of Oak Creek. We've already got the routes designed and ready to go, figured out the costs, we just need the funding. We're working on that with the county. This would include the expansion that the original vision of the Northern Arizona Council of Governments, NAICOC, had put together a plan to do that, and also NAPTA, Northern Arizona Intergovernmental Public Transportation Authority, don't try to say that fast, also had the vision for public transportation throughout the entire Verde Valley. I'm happy to say that with our agreements with Yavapai Apache Nation, we are providing pretty much transportation throughout the Verde Valley now. It's been a good partnership with them as well. They get people to and from Camp Verde and from Clarkdale, to, to and from work primarily, but they also visit the county offices out in, out in the middle of nowhere, out there on 260. So that, that's been a real good help for, for a lot of people as well. Mostly what we're going to try and do, we've looked at providing Saturday service for CAT. That's been something that's come up in a lot of our public meetings, it's come up, I believe, in council meetings before, I'm sure people are talking about it a lot. That's something we'd like to try and do. Basic issue again, is money, but we think people, according to our surveys, have said they'd be willing to pay an extra 25 cents per ride to help fund the Saturday service. So that's something we're looking at. Stay tuned, I may bring that to Council probably next year. That's, that's what I have for you tonight.
Very good. Questions from Mr. Morrow?
I do have one.
Please.
And this has been, this has been with me since the middle of January when I got your, the CAT Link statistics. And I'm just going to pull August of, let's see, August of 18 here. It says average passengers per hour?
Right.
Essentially 10. How many hours do you operate?
We operate 13 hours during the day.
Okay.
Basically from 6:45 to 6:45.
Because then it says average passengers per day, 360. So I don't, I may not be seeing this correctly, but I would think average passengers per hour would be 10 times 13 hours, would be 130 passengers, but we're looking at 360 passengers here per day.
And I would have to, I would have to pull that up, I don't have those numbers exactly in my head right now.
Okay. I mean, maybe they're reconcilable, but what, based on what I know, I'm looking at that, I can't figure that out.
A lot of that's based on monthly averages, so you take the, from what I can remember from the spreadsheet, we take the number of passengers throughout the month divided by the both service and revenue hours, and that's where that number is coming from.
Okay. I would just think that those two should reconcile, and they don't even come close. Like I said, I'm, I'm sure I'm not understanding it properly, but it just jumped out at me.
If, if, if you have some time, we, I'd be happy to come and go with you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Matthews, yeah, let us take a look at that and either I'll send an email out to clarify, or we'll come back to Council with, with the information.
Okay, I'll show you what I'm looking at.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Links currently is just offered Saturday, right? Between Sedona and...
Links is, Links is our one service that's seven days a week.
Okay, Sunday too, okay.
It runs from 6 o'clock in the morning to 7:15 in the evening, Monday through Saturday, and then from 7:30 to 6 on Sunday.
Okay. So the Saturday service, just help me understand how, if we did CAT service on Saturday, how, where would the money come from for that? Because I know 25 cents incre, fair, we don't fund this thing from our fares, right?
Primarily, the bulk of that would come from the grants that I get from the FTA.
Okay.
I will put that into the next budget cycle as an additional service.
Okay.
And all things being equal, get the money from the FTA to provide that additional service.
Got it, okay. So for additional services, there's additional grant money available?
There would be additional grant money available, and of course, there's always the local match that we get from the city of Cottonwood. We get money from the Town of Clarkdale, from the city of Sedona, and Yavapai County to help meet that local match requirement on the grant.
Great. Very good. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, well, that's it for tonight then.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Allhouse made the motion, Councilmember Holt seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.